Good evening and welcome to the May 24, 2021 City Council Work Session. Thank you for joining us in this remote meeting format we're using in response to Governor Brown's Stay Home Save Lives order. This format enables the City Council to meet and take care of business while keeping everyone safe. For work sessions like this one where there is no opportunity for public comment, those wishing to access the meeting can do so by watching the livestream available on our website, the broadcast on Comcast Channel 21, or by calling into the one of the phone numbers listed for this meeting on the Public Webcasts and Meeting Materials webpage. Looking ahead, tonight's regular meeting will include a public forum. Information about how to participate is available on the Public Webcasts and Meeting Materials webpage. And as always, other avenues of communication with me and city councilors are available, including email and voicemail. Thank you again for joining us. And with that, I'm going to turn it right over to the City Manager to introduce the first topic.
Thank you, Mayor. I think our first topic is middle housing and I'm joined by the planning team and believe that I'm kicking it over to Terry Harding or maybe Alyssa. Oh, there you are, Terry. That's why I was like looking for the box, but there you are. Thank you, Terry.
There I am. Thank you, Sarah. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I'm going to start sharing my screen. Okay. I'll trust that that's good unless somebody tells me otherwise. Today, we're going to be talking about House Bill 2001 with the middle housing legislation. Project goals, summarize the public engagement we've done since we last presented to you in January. Talk about the land use code approach to implementing the House Bill and cover next steps. The overall goals of the middle housing project are first and foremost to comply with the House Bill, then to further ongoing work aimed at addressing equity and affordability, and to enable more production of diverse housing across Eugene. It is important to recognize that this project can't fix everything at this moment, but it is a crucial part of the overall housing puzzle. We're focusing on the first goal first, which means preparing a land use code that allows more housing in more places. The other goals will take time to realize and involve many more partners than just the city. So for now, we are working on land use code amendments that implement House Bill 2001 and its associated administrative rules. The state adopted rules require cities to allow more types of housing in more places, including duplexes on each lot and triplexes, quadplexes, cottage clusters and townhouses in residential zones that allow detached single dwelling. Many of the rules tie back to lot size, and you can find this map showing lot sizes around Eugene on our middle housing webpage. The project team has been working to gather public input on the middle housing approach to code writing, following the public involvement plan approved by the Planning Commission. I'll share some key takeaways in a moment, but first some big numbers. From February to May of this year, we held 27 meetings and events, including five roundtable meetings with 75 community participants, gathered 741 survey responses with 3,800 survey views on our website, reached out on two new forms of social media featuring 26 posts, and hosted five Facebook Live outreach events that garnered 4,000 views. House Bill 2001 is landmark statewide zoning reform. Because of that, it is important to share the why behind the House Bill. This was challenging because, as you all know, we kicked off work last summer in the midst of a pandemic. Accordingly, we moved our community engagement entirely online and got creative adding more ways for people to get involved. Then there is the timeline of having code in place by June 30, 2022, and the state's minimum standards, which have influenced the questions we've asked the community. We began our outreach with an intentional focus on equity and inclusion because of the exclusionary history of single-family zoning. And that focus has been central in our communication. It can be found on the project webpage, in our FAQs and back sheets, in the Equity Roundtable, and in the project's community-developed values and principles. We're committed to continuing to tell this story and to center equity in this new land use code. For a thorough presentation on exclusionary zoning, you can watch the May 17 Planning Commission meeting where Dr. Sarah Adams Shane from the U L Law School presented on this topic. We heard from a great snapshot of the community through our outreach. Some of the exciting highlights we're hearing from renters, young people, and people who'd never been involved with the city before. We also had all wards and people who live outside city limits but within the urban growth boundary. A big piece of the engagement around the code was the middle housing survey. Overall, it received 741 responses, 730 in English and 11 in Spanish. The results were that the survey respondents overwhelmingly encouraged the city to go beyond the minimum standards required by the state. The survey was open for a little over a month on Engage Eugene and was also available to download and print. One of the questions we asked was overall what direction is best for the Eugene community? Eighty-two percent of survey respondents indicated preference for the city to go beyond, as I stated before, to encourage or incentivize middle housing opportunities across Eugene. We asked our Equity Roundtable the same questions as the Community Survey and more. Overall, the participants highlighted issues and concerns for BIPOC community members, people with disabilities, LGBTQ plus people, and low-income renters. Their input was aligned with the survey results on most questions to encourage and incentivize middle housing across the city and also resulted in recommended actions to further equity and housing affordability beyond the land use code, which I will come back to later in the presentation. We heard from local developers' focus group, which included both market rate and affordable housing developers. Two meetings with developers, designers, and a real estate professional yielded pages of comments and recommended actions to remove barriers to housing production and encourage lower building costs. Themes included providing flexibility and simplicity in the land use code to enable Eugene to fully comply with middle housing legislation and move toward broader access to housing in our community. And now we're going to pause and hear from a couple of our Healthy Democracy panelists, Hunter and Francisco. And so I'm going to stop sharing and allow them to turn on their cameras and talk to you for a couple of minutes. Francisco and Hunter.
Hello, everyone. Hi, my name is Francisco and I've been a, I have been a Eugene resident for the past 18 years. And then last fall, as Terry mentioned, I was selected as a part of panelists to, from Healthy Democracy organization in the city of Eugene. And then we worked on our principles and in February, we utilized our guiding principles that we composed in the fall and worked from a city of Eugene middle housing survey that was open to the general public. We had a presentation about the code framework that the city was using, which divided the code proposal into the three tiers that Terry mentioned, they allow, encourage, and incentivize. And we also learned about the state minimum standards as well as the state's model code. And we used the four questions of the middle house, housing survey as the basis for rotating a small group discussions. Each group identified key points that would lead towards a choice of allowing, courage, or incentivize for each question. And where relevant, we relied on our guiding principles. Finally, the panel voted on its support for allowing, encouraging, or incentivizing each case. In summary, regarding all four questions on the survey, the majority panel recommended courage or the incentivized approach. And with that, I'm going to turn it to Hunter.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Hunter and I also served on the panel developed by Healthy Democracy. I've lived in Eugene for the last four years now. I was a student at the U O V and I'm a recent graduate, December 2019, right before the pandemic. Woo-hoo, what timing. I just have to say, you know, being a part of the panel, first of all, was a very unique experience. We had met three different times over this last nine months in the fall, where we developed our guiding principles in February, as Francisco mentioned, where we reviewed the survey that was put together, and then later in April, very recently, where we kind of just did some more work on how, how much further the draft code came along. And we also really focused on other ways to stay engaged. That was one of the really unique things that I was really taken away by with the whole panel experience. It was how engaged everybody was and how willing they were to, you know, put in the extra work and you know, wanting to stay a part of the process in general. But so we just, we focused a little more on code, listened to a presentation by APG, by Matt, and kind of focused on some of the key points that they made and also reviewed a feasibility analysis from Eco Northwest.
Hunter and Francisco, I'm going to go back to my presentation, finish the slides, and then we also have Matt Hasty and Becky Hewitt here. We'll all be available for questions when I'm done. So now we're going to talk a little bit about the land use code approach. The team is still working through the details with the Planning Commission, but the following slides summarize how the project team is approaching turning the state rules and all of the community input into new code for Eugene. So there's three main themes here that I'm going to talk to you about. The first one is the overall approach, as you've heard several panelists talk about and from the survey results, is to encourage and incentivize middle housing across Eugene to meet the House Bill and support the project's values and principles. Much more detail for different housing types and code sections is included in your packet, which is Attachment D, the memo from Angelo Planning Group, but this is the very highest level takeaway. Secondly, the recommended approach facilitates compact development in line with Envision Eugene recommendations. Near frequent transit routes reduce parking requirements, allow smaller lots, increase building heights, and increase lot coverage to meet the triple bottom line of sustainability. And the third theme is about affordability. The recommended approach is to choose the incentivized code package to maximize the impact of the code on new middle housing affordability. More detail on this recommendation is included in the memo from Eco Northwest in Attachment E. The choices included in the incentivized code option are the most likely to facilitate lower-cost housing through the code. We borrowed this chart from the Lane County Affordable Housing Action Plan. The orange box shows example households of a couple earning minimum wage who could afford $1,250 in monthly housing costs. And the second little icon there shows a household with a logging equipment operator who can afford $1,400 in monthly housing costs. So the estimated rent and affordability range of what the different code options of allow, encourage, and incentivize can produce is shown along the bottom of the slide. As you can see, the incentivized code package can produce housing affordable to people earning 71% to 89% of area median income. And for details on what that might mean in terms of housing cost savings and how many people this could help, Becky Hewitt is available for some questions about this data. Again, the code amendments can't produce the lowest-income housing, but they can help Eugene establish a set of land use rules that encourage lower-cost rental homes and lower-cost homes for purchase. Throughout our outreach, people stressed the importance of using comprehensive housing strategies beyond land use code amendments. Things like fee reductions, tax exemptions, and pre-approved building plans are things the city does in some fashion already, but maybe only for multifamily housing or only for subsidized affordable housing. These programs could be extended to include middle housing through an ongoing project such as the Housing Implementation Pipeline. Because these ideas came up in every outreach group conversation, we're excited to note that the city's ongoing Equity Panel will be advising city staff on the Housing Implementation Pipeline, or HIP, process, allowing the momentum generated by middle housing outreach to continue into another city-sponsored project. Finally, our next steps are to complete the code approach recommendations through the Planning Commission work sessions next month in June of 2021. Then with planning permission direction in hand, staff will assemble a complete adoption package and begin Planning Commission review in August. On a fast timeline, we're aiming to bring code amendments to you for a city council hearing by the end of 2021, and our deadline for having a code in place is June 30, 2022. And that's the end of my presentation, so I'll stop sharing and look forward to your questions.
Thank you so much. I, first of all, I want to thank Francisco and Hunter for being a part of that Healthy Democracy panel and for taking the time to present to us today. Thank you very much for your community service in doing that work. And I think, I think we all feel that we have been well-informed by that panel and it is, has been a very, I, I think, provided some very useful guidelines for us as we kind of think about how to implement this in the most effective way for our community to increase the availability and the affordability of housing. So thank you for your work and thank you, Terry. And I see that Counselor Evans, Greg, you want to kick it off?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thanks for the staff for the information. I really appreciate that. One of the issues that I have with this is the issue of rentals versus homeownership. So if we're doing ADUs and we're trying to encourage homeownership, totally for, totally in favor of that concept, the issue that I have is the use of ADUs as, as rental property and what that effect that has on the housing supply, since our supply is so tight right now and doesn't seem to loosen up any in the future. You know, people are going to pay far more money in rent than they will in a mortgage. You know, and there are still redlining hurdles and challenges to deal with with insurance companies and some lenders, I won't say all lenders. But it has been noted in other parts of the country where, you know, points are added to people with certain demographic profiles when they want to buy a house or get into a house. And that's the issue that I'm really trying to, trying to deal with is that if somebody has got a good job that make $150,000 a year, maybe 250 total in household income, and, you know, they go to a Realtor, not, well, they go to a lender through their Realtor, the lender says, oh, okay, yeah, you can get in his house, but you're going to have to pay, you know, at least two points over what you're, it is going to cost someone else. In other words, a white family will get a bigger break than a family of color going in right off the bat. So I want to kind of get, get a sense of how this, how the zoning piece will work in terms of preventing those kinds of practices. Those practices still go on and they go on to this day. My parents couldn't get a bank loan, so they went to an SNL to buy their house. And it's strictly because of where they were buying their house and what the color of their skin was. So can you, can you give some insight on that? And then the other thing is, is do you see any kind of subsidy programs either at the state or the federal level coming down to help people to get into these homes? Since we took, since we took, you know, fair housing way a long time ago and we don't have federally-supported housing projects or other means of sheltering people.
Right, thank you. I, I want to say that the code amendments will be neutral as far as renting or owning a home. So both will be possible. Some of the analysis that was done speculated that certain types might be more feasible, like row houses turned out to be looking good in terms of their development feasibility, but other triplexes and quads looked good for rental affordability on the chart that I showed. I don't know, Becky, if you want to hop on and add anything to that. But both would be possible, and I think the other ideas you're interested in were brought up a lot in terms of homeownership assistance programs, loans to the BIPOC community, things like that, fall within the category of things that could be advanced through a process like the HIP.
Sure. Hi, I'm Becky Hewitt with Echo Northwest and worked on the economic analysis and, and financial feasibility analysis. And as Terry said, both rental and ownership forms of middle housing are certainly possible through this. And to some extent, the incentivized package helps make rental housing, make that possible, make it possible to build smaller rental units, make that a little bit more likely to happen. But in both, but in any case, ownership will continue likely to be one of the, one of the things that you're most likely to see, things like townhomes that offer a more affordable ownership option than some other types of housing. But there are, they don't resolve all of the barriers to homeownership that you noted.
One other question real quick. I know I'm out of time, but I think this is important. Could we, as a city, provide some kind of tax incentive for maybe the first five years of homeownership for people who are middle or low income? In other words, we, we, we abate taxes for three to five years on those folks?
That's certainly been suggested, and, and I think it's possible, but not through the code amendments themselves.
Okay. That's what we have to do other than as a council, not in a line with this. Okay, got it.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
Sorry, got to press the button. Thank you, Mayor. I, I agree very much with the last thing that, that that Greg said, and he and I have been discussing a couple of ideas on some interesting stuff here that I hope we'll bring up at some point soon when the, when the discussion's right. I agree entirely with the first thing he said, our community rents has too many renters and not enough homeowners. And I'm in that business, so it sounds, you know, it sounds like I'm not very objective here, but the West Coast average is 65% homeownership and 35% rentals. And Eugene is 51% rentals and, you know, 49% homeownership. So it's a, it's a pretty wide disparity, and there's no faster way to eliminate, you know, the kind of wealth disparities that exist in our community. So I agree with him. I'd like to see us incentivizing homes that are built for purchase as opposed to kind of systemically building poverty into just building an ever-increasing, larger, ever-increasing amount of rentals. I would disagree with him about the second thing he said, though, is that it, the, there's an organization, a federal agency called the CFPB who regulates, and HUD regulates for bias in lending, and they're pretty harsh about it. And if he's aware of, Counselor, if you're aware of anybody that's been treated like that recently, let's, let me know. Let's make sure that those loan officers lose their license, because that's not okay. Would you bring up that, that slide that shows? Would you bring up that, that slide that showed the numbers again, real quick, Terry?
The chart, what's the difference?
Yeah.
Income?
So as I'm looking at that, you're talking about a home priced at 220 to 250 as the middle income category?
Yeah.
Today, you know that construction costs are better than double what they were even as much as a year ago. And it's, it's well over $400 a square foot to build something. So those amounts right there are describing a home of 500 to 550 square feet, right? Is my math right?
I don't know what the square footage assumptions were.
Perhaps our, perhaps our panelists from Echo Northwest can help remind where the market is today with regard to square footage cost for housing construction.
So to answer your first question, the, what's shown here, the types of middle housing that would be affordable at that range, our assumption is that those would be like a two-bed, one-bath rental unit, not for sale. And the for-sale product would be generally affordable at a higher range than the, the range that's shown here.
What's square footage cost in the market today?
I mean, that varies by the product type. And we've heard everything from high 100s, $200 a square foot and up for custom homes, certainly.
Thank you. Dan Hill was one of the people on your, on your process here, Terry, as I remember seeing his picture there. And he made a presentation a year, little, little over a year ago, a year and a half ago, that construction costs were $215 a square foot to build an ADU. And they have doubled since. So my suggestion is that what we're, what we're planning for is good, but what we're planning for is more rentals that are very small and something in the 500 or 600 square foot range. And I, I, I'm going to be in, in favor of us doing something, but I wish we were doing more to incentivize the right sort of thing for people's best financial health. So. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt and then Randy.
Thanks, Mayor, and, and thank you for the presentation. I, I rent. I, I might be the only renter on council right now, considering Council Clark recently purchased a home. I rent because it's what I can afford, largely because of wage stagnation, lack of upward mobility in the workforce due to automation or downsizing. There are federal incentives for first-time homeowners largely revolving around establishing residency in rural communities and not necessarily in our urban core. So if this is one answer among many that are needed, I am enthusiastic about getting behind it, especially when I look at a map that mirrors LTD's short-term and long-term transportation plans. Building up and not out along those, those tier-one transportation routes is where my mind goes. I want to know, please, if there's a feasibility study revolving around the amount of land available along those tier-one transportation routes that not, that's not necessarily currently being used for housing. How much needs to be rezoned for both commercial and residential use? I suspect there's quite a bit of residential and industrial zoned land. And then how does that, I guess this is more for a question when we do our joint council LTD meeting. How does that middle housing map along those transit lines track with LTD's short-term and long-term plans?
I have a quick response to that, which is to say that we are in the process of doing that feasibility study and pilot study on River Road for the corridor itself. And there will be some zoning, zone, zoning updates proposed and brought to you soon for that corridor. For this project, the middle housing code incentivized package would allow more compact development within a quarter mile of frequent transit routes. So that is the geography that has been proposed in that option.
Okay, if I could, okay, thank you. Shifting gears just a second then, Terry, if this is kind of Council Clark's arena too, so Mike, feel free to, to weigh in. Neighbor across the street, house goes up for sale, gets 22 offers in two days, sells for north of $105,000 over asking. Short-term, or not short-term, but what's, what's the shorthand of how the middle housing code proposal, if we were to provide the, the most amount of incentives, helps put a stop to the lack of availability and the unaffordability of, and the pathway, the unaffordable pathway to homeownership in our community?
I would say that it provides more options. It allows for types that are missing in our community between large lot, single-family homes and apartments. And would welcome Becky to add on to that answer, but that's the short answer.
I guess I would just add to that, that there's a fair amount of research showing that a relationship between housing supply and longer-term affordability or price escalation. So making it possible for more supply to get built in, in areas that are desirable and that have urban services overall should help keep housing more affordable community-wide and prevent it from having sort of the California effect of demand really escalating housing prices very, very rapidly because supply can't keep up. So I would say that to the extent that it makes it easier to build additional housing in the community, that should help with that kind of bidding up because that's, I mean, it happens because there's not enough supply at a given price point. It expands the potential for supply at that kind of more moderate price point and should over time help reduce that kind of bidding war situation.
Great, thank you. And I'm pleased to say, no offense to folks who relocate here from California, I'm pointing at myself. I'm pleased to say that my neighbor across the street who ended up purchasing that home is Vegas's old veterinarian. So it's someone who's been in the community for many years. I guess the old adage, the field of dreams adage. It's not necessarily if you build it, they will come. It's if you build it, there will be afford, there will be availability.
Thank you. Randy and then Alan.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Terry, and your staff for putting together a lot of information that's very helpful. I appreciate the presentation. I want to also thank Francisco Hunter and the people you served on the panel with. I think that's an important voice and something's going on with the timer. It looks like I'm nine seconds over and I just started. So anyway, what I wanted to speak to were two points. One is the importance of making homeownership available to as many people as possible is one of the few ways in our society and in our economy that people can accumulate personal wealth that carries them into retirement. And this, this is something that is part of having a healthy community and that we need to, to take note of. And I also wanted to speak just briefly to the, the cost of, of housing. I mean, obviously we have a supply and demand imbalance that's creating part of that with houses that are already built. But right now we're experiencing extreme inflation in the cost of materials and labor. And, you know, just last year, a sheet of plywood, it was a little north of $13. Today it's north of $80. And so play that out and what it takes in raw materials to build a house and, or an apartment or anything else. And that is contributing to, to the costs. And then the last point I wanted to make, and I hope my colleagues will, will think about this on our next presentation on wildfire preparedness. One of the reasons materials are in short supply right now is because of the large loss of structures over the last few years in our wildland urban interface across the Western United States. So these homes are being rebuilt and it's put a drain on both our, our labor pool and also our material supplies. So to me, this makes it very important that we do what we can to mitigate wildfire as well, which is a contributor to our problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan?
Thanks, Mayor. I would like to thank Hunter and Francisco for being here tonight and all the people on the panel. Thank you for that. I also wanted to say that what Greg said about discrimination is an important issue that we need to continue to work on. My question is about the amount of discretion that we have. HB 2001 wasn't filled with lots of detail that was easily discernible, but its basic tenet was remove barriers to middle housing. Things have gotten a bit clearer over time with the model code and Luba and other things that have occurred. So something, some people think that we have a lot of leadway in how we implement this law and, and including numerous potential restrictions on allowing middle housing in R1. And I wish that were the case because I didn't like HB 2001, but I have learned that we don't have much discretion. And I would like to, if you could speak to, from a planning and a legal perspective, on how much discretion we actually do have on where, how, parking, design standards, how many units, all those kinds of things that are embedded in this, how much discretion we actually have in implementing this, because there seems to be a lot of confusion about that.
Great. I'll start and then pass. I'm sorry, I missed that last piece.
Is this simple yes, no question?
Oh, how much discretion do we have? Unfortunately, it's not a yes, no question, but the state did get more and more specific as they worked through the process of writing administrative rules. So those were adopted in December of 2020 and they function as a floor. So they are the minimum standards for cities to comply with the House bill. And we successfully wrote a grant to the state to have consultants help us write a Eugene-specific code so that we could include things that are important to our community. And Matt is available to, to answer questions if needed. But I think your legal part of the question will go to Lauren and I'll, I'll just let her jump in now.
Thanks, Terry. I don't have much to add to what you said, really. I mean, the, the law and the minimum standards constitute a floor. The city does have discretion to go beyond the requirements of House Bill 2001, but in a lot of, generally does not have discretion to do less than what the bill requires. And depending on the, the type of standard we're talking about, sometimes they're framed as not fewer than or not more than. It can't be taller than, so it gets a little bit confusing about what is going beyond or less than. But the general rule is, as Terry said, House Bill 2001 and the minimum standards set a floor. And then the city has discretion to do more, but not less.
So they asked it a different way, get a little bit more clarity. So if we were to propose something that went, was more lenient than the minimum standards and administrative rules that were put forth in December, they would, the, the, it would probably, it could get litigated and they would say, no, you have to go back up to the floor and the minimum standard. And if we were to go beyond the minimum standard and people said, were to litigate it saying, you shouldn't be doing that. You should only adopt the minimum standard. What happens in that case? So there's kind of two, two scenarios there, Lauren.
Thanks, Councilors, like I'm going to pick a standard and I think I'm going to get the numbers wrong, but just for purposes of.
We don't know what they are anyway.
No, hold me to the numbers. But say the, the minimum standard, say, you know, for a triplex, you can't have a maximum height that's lower than 30 feet. You have to allow folks to at least build up to 30 feet if they're building a triplex. Eugene could not set maximum height at 25 feet, but we could decide to set maximum height at 35 feet. So you could go beyond what's required but not do less. If, if Eugene decides to go beyond what's required and that, that decision is appealed, I would advocate strongly for your ability to go beyond what's required. That is something that the council has the authority to do.
Yeah, I, I appreciated the, the, the matrix that had all the different code recommendations and the allow, encourage, incentivize, I like that construct too. I'm wondering if it was, if, what a workload it would be to have what we're proposing laid down against what the minimum standard is. Or maybe just add another box to this table.
In most cases, the allow option is the minimum standard. And Matt, this is where I call on you to.
Yeah, I would have said exactly what you just said. In most cases, like probably 90-plus percent, the allow standard is the minimum standard and the encourage and the incentivize is going above. So when I say above, I say frankly, I would think about it being more lenient as being able to go above and beyond. You mostly can't be more, I would say restrictive. You can't say you can only build something 20 feet tall instead of 30 feet tall. To me, that's being more restrictive, but that's just how I think about it. Whereas you can allow things to be taller. So it really depends partly on how you define lenient versus restrictive, I think, in terms of what you can or can't do without running afoul of being in compliance with the administrative rules and the, and the House bill. But yeah, in terms of the table, look at the allow column for sort of what's the minimum and the other sort of what's generally being proposed, not in all cases, but in a lot of cases.
Yeah, I like that. So it's about, since the goal was to remove barriers about middle housing and to get more middle housing, being more restrictive means you get less of that. So that's what, that's what the below means, being more restrictive and not getting more affordable or middle housing. Okay, it's a good contract. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else want a first round before I give Mike his second round? All clear? All right, Mike, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I brought up all those numbers before and asked to see the chart again. I wanted to be clear about what we're doing. I sense that this is going to pass. I sense that there's probably votes enough for it. But Randy, in my opinion, is 100% right and much of what Alan says, well, beginning. Because of the cost of construction, the only middle housing units and ADUs that will be constructed being, you know, six to 800 square feet, two-bedroom, one-bath, like she was mentioning. But they'll cost upwards of $300,000 or more to do. And the only people who can do that are the ones with the money to do it. And what they're going to do is buy the old, small, single-family house that is reasonably affordable now, tear it down and buy, build a fourplex. And it'll be at market rate and it won't be affordable. And, and that's just the reality of the market. And to Matt's point earlier, you are correct, sir, that the 100K over asking is a daily occurrence in our city. And as I have said in a previous meeting, there were times 12, 13 years ago where our planning department could show you the six and 700 permits for single-family homes that were taken out and built. And for the last three years, we've never crossed 300 new homes for sale being built. And as of a few weeks ago, when I mentioned it, so far this year, we had 51 permits taken out for single-family homes to be built. Beaverton, half our size, has a target of 500 per year that they're trying to incentivize and create by helping developers actually be able to afford to do it. If we're not in the 700 new single-family homes being built a year range, this market will continue to do what it's doing. And that's just simply because the people that are coming here are coming at a higher rate than we planned. And the demand is incredibly higher than it was when we did that initial planning. And so like I said, this is going to pass, but it'll, in my opinion, And so, like I said, this is gonna pass, but it'll, in my opinion, this will build a lot more rentals and will, we will slip more into a structural poverty community rather than focusing on seeing more single-family homes built. So, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to take a moment to reflect on this myself and sort of a reminder that where we are right now is, is putting our code in compliance. And so that calls on us to, to reduce barriers to a certain style of housing. The next step, as Terry has said, is you have the opportunity at L and the, and the economic analysis indicates that if you provide incentives, those new types of housing become more affordable. They, they, oh, they open up the door. So this code, when it comes to you, is the first step. The second step is related to your other work around what incentives do you create and how do you do those incentives? So you have a lot of latitude. And single-family housing can be, actually, it can be a duplex, right? A single family can occupy duplex. I mean, it's not, they're not mutually exclusive. And, and we are trying to create an environment which there is a larger supply. Granted, we are not going to change the larger landscape of where the economy is today, but we're building for the future. We're not building for, we're not going to answer this challenge tomorrow. We're building for the future. So, you know, I, so, you know, just remember where you are kind of in the landscape of the decision-making. This is really around the land use code and what the code can do. The next step is really you have and you'll have this, the HI, the hip coming back with a, with a broader array of options. So, so much work to be done and really interesting, really in-depth, very, very interesting report. So thank you very much to Terry and the whole team that made that possible. And if there are no other questions, I will close out this, this first part of our work session and with, with our thanks and move on to the next item on our agenda and turn it back to the city manager.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. We're joined by quite a team for the second work session too. And I believe that Chris Heppel, Chief Heppel is here and Mark Dahl, and I think they're gonna kick it off. And we also have some members of the community here. So this is a fun night of having community members participating in your work session.
Thanks, Sarah. I'll just go ahead and kick it off real quick. So thanks, Mayor and Councilors, for having us this evening to talk a little about our wildland urban interface challenges and issues. We affectionately refer to that term as the wooey. So if you hear us using that term through the evening, that's what we're talking about is our wildland urban interface or that exchange of where our community spread goes into our more forested and rural type communities where we have less fire protection that may be available as you might see deeper into our urban environment. So this is quite a large topic with very little, little bit of time, limited time. I want to thank Mark Dahl for stepping up today. One of our lead team members who was gonna present this was, became unavailable today to do this. So I want to turn over to Mark with my thanks for stepping up and doing this presentation for us.
All right, great. Chief, thank you very much. And while the slideshow is coming online, I would like to say good evening, Mayor Venice, Councilors, Chief Heppel, and all of our wildland wildfire preparedness partners, greetings to you tonight. It is an honor and a pleasure to be with you tonight to provide an update on wildfire preparedness within the city of Eugene. As Chief Heppel mentioned, I'm not the original presenter. That role was for Deputy Fire Marshal Merrill Harrison. He very much wanted to be with you tonight, but unfortunately, in his, his home state of Utah, where his sister lives, last Friday, they suffered a fairly large conflagration fire within a residential neighborhood. Unfortunately, his sister's home did burn. And so Merrill literally is on the road with his motorhome en route to St. George, Utah, to provide his sister a place to stay and to be with her during this time. DFM Harrison, in conjunction with all of the wildfire preparedness partners, he put his heart and soul into this presentation. I know he wanted to be here with you tonight. So keep him in your thoughts, but it is my pleasure to be with you tonight. So thank you. Next slide, please. You know, let's face it, twenty twenty was an absolute devastating year for wildfires in Oregon. We had extremely dry conditions as we sometimes do. That coupled with a sentinel weather event with east winds, which are uncommon but not unprecedented. We literally had wildfire in our backyard, this being the Holiday Farm Fire, as it has become known. We watched in horror, really, as a million plus acres of forest land were ravaged by fire. We watched as thousands of homes and businesses were destroyed. And we listened to the very horrific news that seven people sadly lost their lives during those fires. In addition to property and monetary and life loss, we know that wildfires take a severe toll also on our emotional well-being. Next slide, please. The Lane County Community Wildfire Protection Plan, or in short, the CWPP, is a plan that provides a community with a set of goals, actions, and resources specifically designed to address the threat of wildfire. A CWPP is a critical tool required in order to leverage funding for hazard mitigation and recovery work through mitigation grants and other resources. This plan has recently been updated and was adopted last year in two thousand twenty. The CWPP was also part of your AIS for reference. The Eugene metro area is the largest urbanized area in Lane County. Our region is characterized as intermingled areas of moderate to low fire risk. However, as you can see, there are pockets of high wildfire risk within the region. These areas are mainly found at the urban fringe where urban development meets forest land. The area, as Chief Heppel had mentioned, is known as a wooey or wildland urban interface and is a defined zone of transition located between wilderness and land developed. These areas have an abundance of vegetation or, another way to put it, fuel load, steep slopes and limited access and egress routes. The areas identified as high wildfire risk in our region are in the Eugene South Hills. Next slide, please. So this slide really focuses on our, a few of our partners within the wildfire preparedness plan. The city of Eugene Parks and Open Spaces are responsible for vegetation management in city parks and on city-owned lands. They implement these hazardous fuel reduction projects through grants and assistance funds from state and federal funding sources. To date, they have been extremely fortunate and have received over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Bureau of Land Management's Community Wildfire Assistance Program, five Northwest Youth Corps Crew Work Days from the city's twenty nineteen funding, and thirteen thousand five hundred dollars with six days of crew work through the Oregon Department of Forestry's Emergency Board Funding. In total, one point three million dollars in grant funds have resulted in seven hundred and fifty acres of hazardous fuels cleared from natural area parklands since two thousand and seven. Many of these areas have since required two to three rounds of additional treatment. Fuel's reduction had occurred in twelve natural park areas ranging from East Eugene to Southwest Eugene and in the downtown core at Skinner Butte. Projects are located in the Ridgeline Park System and in neighborhood nature areas. Controlled ecological burns have occurred in West Eugene Wetlands and at Suzanne Arley Park. These ecological burns have been occurring in West Eugene Wetlands for the past thirty years. The Oregon Department of Forestry, or ODF, continues to be a very active partner and resource in our community. Project funding and facilitating of firewise communities are just a few of the things that this partner brings with them. Seven of these firewise communities are located in South Eugene. The Oregon Department of Forestry was a key partner in our twenty nineteen South Hills Fuels Reduction Pilot Program, providing countless hours of training, equipment management, and homeowner property assessments. And a copy of this report is also included in your AIS. The Northwest Youth Corps was also a key component in the twenty nineteen South Hills Fuels Reduction Pilot Project and, as mentioned, continues today as really the boots-on-the-ground aspect of the twenty twenty-one E-Board South Hills Project. Next slide, please. So you'll notice the term partnership at the top of this slide. And, and if, if I may define partnership in summary, it really is people or organizations working together towards a shared or a common goal. And really, it cannot be expressed enough, the amount of gratitude for partners highlighted in this slide. The amount of time, work, and collaboration demonstrated here is exemplary. And you will have the opportunity to meet and speak with amazing representatives from these partnering agencies and organizations. At the end of this presentation, again, to all of you, thank you so much for your time and your work and your efforts towards wildland fire preparedness. Next slide, please. So the Eugene Wildfire Preparedness Coalition really is, it's a rich example of community-based grassroots efforts dedicated to wildfire preparedness. Some past activities really included a very purposed and broad range of communications. Its present activities are really focused on acquiring grant funding to support wildfire preparedness and evacuation planning. Future activities, this coalition will continue with these critical elements as well as work to fund and hire a fire adaptive community coordinator. Next slide, please. Eugene Springfield Fire, in collaboration with emergency management offices from Lane County, the city of Eugene and the city of Springfield are currently underway to reassess and revise our evacuation zone plans. This project will help clarify zones and routes used by emergency services and the public. This is expected to be completed by June first of this year, two thousand twenty-one. Additionally, the University of Oregon, in coordination with Lane County, has created a fire evacuation map that displays fire evacuation zones relative to the University of Oregon campus. Next slide, please. So this, this last slide, for now, really represents the, probably the best path to compliance. I know compliance sounds like a really harsh word, but it's a functional word. And this slide represents that best path to compliance. Some context is important here. The Eugene Springfield Fire Marshal's Office does not have any kind of nuisance vegetation authority or enforcement capabilities on privately owned property, that is, your home and, and my home. The city of Eugene does have a nuisance vegetation program located within parks and open space with ordinances located in Eugene City Code Section Six. Our pathway to compliance and safety assurance is through education. Fire prevention education really is the first step in the fire department's commitment to protecting the quality of life for the community. We believe that providing constant and consistent messaging for the community will help the community to be proactive on their own property and understand their role in wildfire preparedness and the hazards that they face. We are actively engaged in public education through social media, community presentations, and advertising. Eugene Springfield Fire's website includes an easily found and navigated link to a multitude of local, county, state, and federal wildfire preparedness resources. This was updated just this past May first of this year. It is an excellent website and I really encourage you all to visit it. And as soon as you log into Eugene Springfield Fire's website, it'll be right there for you to navigate through. Wildfire preparedness truly lies with all of us and we all must actively assume our role in prevention and diligently strive for success. It is our goal to continue to educate the public on the benefits of defensible space and encourage neighbors, helping neighbors. In the very last slide, I'm going to show you a very prime example of the effectiveness of defensible space. The solution lies with firewise communities, maintaining strong public and private partnerships, and sharing and leveraging resources in an actively engaged community collectively working together to reduce fuel loads on their properties. As the city grows into the urban growth boundary and the wildland urban interface, planning and preparation will be key components and may require the potential adoption of codes and standards that mandate defensible space and/or fire-resistant construction. If I may summarize, preparedness is really about the act of changing behaviors or processes to reduce the impact a disaster may have on a population or group. While the city of Eugene as a whole, based on a risk assessment, is classified as moderate risk, you have seen during this presentation that our South Hills areas are classified as high risk. Empowering our communities with consistent messaging, education, and solid resources will better enable the community to prepare, protect, and preserve during any type of an emergency. Next slide, please. So as you can see, this is a fairly newly built structure, beautiful home. And you can see that wildfire absolutely ravaged three hundred and sixty-five degrees around the structure except for the immediate area, three hundred and sixty-five degrees around the structure. It is an excellent example of defensible space techniques and concepts when it comes to wildfire preparedness. So this concludes my presentation to you this evening. I want to express my deep thanks to you all for, for hearing us out and receiving us the way that you did. We so appreciate that. And I also want to, again, thank our wildfire preparedness partners who are here with us tonight. And as you may have questions for us, we are certainly at your ready. And as those questions come for our partners, please feel free to, to chime in to those questions. And I thank you very much.
Thank you so much for that presentation. And that final photo is, is pretty compelling. I will just say that the city manager and I on Friday had an opportunity to ride down, float down the Mackenzie to see the fire damage there. And it was astonishing to see, you know, lot after lot that had burned. And then, and then the house that was freestanding and seemed to have been untouched. And I recognize there, there are defensible spaces and reasons for that. And then there also just feels like, wow, there's this sort of arbitrariness. Did the wind blow? It was there. But very, very haunting. And I know you were, you were, you were present through the worst of that conflagration. So I don't need to tell you how astonishing it is. I, I don't know if there, I don't, not seeing any, any hands. Oh, there we go. All right. Matt and then Randy.
Oh, thanks, Mayor. I was intentionally waiting for the former fire chief to put his hand up so I could, I could go second.
Well, you can go second.
I, I, I just have a quick question, Counsel Gross, if that's okay. Thanks. First of all, firefighters, thank you. You're the heroes of our community. Hats off, salute. Thank you, thank you for all you do. A question has been cropping up in our neighborhood, right around the thirtieth. And it wouldn't be 30th and Aggett, but when you're heading toward LCC and you would go south toward Aggett, so south of 30th on Aggett, there's a lot of pockets of overgrown vegetation. Some is city-owned and some is private property. There's no nuisance vegetation authority on private property. And what is a neighbor to do if they can't get a hold of a property owner? What are the channels to to reach out and, you know, folks want to be good neighbors, but there are some folks who are just frustrated because there have been lots that have been held for 40-plus years, and they just can't seem to navigate how to properly connect with the property owner. Is there something that you would suggest that council can do to be helpful in that regard? And in the meantime, what is a neighbor to do if they want to reduce the fuel load on adjacent property that is privately held, and they just cannot communicate one way or another with the for-profit entity or the private entity who holds that land?
So this might be a good question to start with, at least. Jeff Chandler, if you are there, if you have any input on this, kind of to begin and to start it off.
So, yeah, this is kind of a touchy subject because due to private property and trespassing laws, my program can't really enforce. We can get an abatement warrant, which takes a lot of community resources that the program doesn't really have. I think the real thing is, and it's a program that I'm working on developing a little bit more as the new vegetation manager, nuisance edge regulatory officer, is trying to find a way to guide property owners. Unfortunately, so vacant lots are abatable. If it's a developed lot, it's a lot trickier, and it's those situations that it becomes a civil matter, and a neighbor ultimately has to take it to court and pursue legal action against another neighbor. So it gets rid of that friendly feel of a neighbor talking to a neighbor, which is a bummer. You know, nobody wants to be a bad neighbor. If it is a vacant lot, if it's easily mowable, my program can get involved, and we have a contractor that will send after we've issued enough warnings to a property owner who is being negligent. Last week, I sent Merrill an email, Merrill Harrison from the Fire Marshal's Office, an email proposing an idea that the Fire Marshal's Office and my program figure out a way to work better together. We work pretty well together already, but I have a contractor that I can utilize, and the Fire Marshal's Office does not have a contractor, so the way we enforce on things can be different. And if a lot is vacant, we might be able to create a mechanism that allows me to, even on a developed lot, potentially trespass, in quotes. It wouldn't, it'd be effective as a warrant, sort of, but to kind of create a firewise situation. So my program is strictly enforcement. Ideally, we get voluntary compliance. But, you know, sometimes people don't do that, and I'm not a fan of sending a bluff letter to somebody. So we don't, if it's developed and somebody's standing there and tells us to trespass, and I'm not going to waste taxpayer dollars saying, hey, you need to mow this. If you don't, I'm sending a contractor three times and then never sending a contractor because it looks bad for the city. So I'd like to create a mechanism, but we really don't have a lot of resources or a blanket warrant policy that lets me send a contractor into somebody's property unless it's a vacant lot already.
What's the best way for the community to get in touch with you, Jeff, and your program?
Yeah, I mean, my phone number is 541-682-4821. And we have a website, the Nuisance Vegetation Program. You can just Google the city of Eugene Nuisance program.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Counsel Keaton, on our website, Eugene Springfield Fire website, you will also see a link to park and open space and the nuisance vegetation as well. So you can get there a couple of ways.
Great. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Mark, and thank you, Mayor. I may come around for a round two. Thanks.
Thank you, Randy, and then Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mark, for stepping in on the presentation. Wayne, good to see you there as well. I was kind of holding off because I wasn't sure if we were going to give the Eugene Wildfire Preparedness Coalition a chance to speak. I actually think they are our answer to some of the problems with private property. That's one of the reasons I was so excited when I saw them form up. I know through past experience that we do a pretty good job between Fire, Parks and Open Space, and ODF, and Youth Corps of getting in and cleaning up public lands and mitigating the fire risk there. We have much less success in private property. And almost by accident, we learned a number of years ago through the No Fire in My Backyard campaign here locally that the best way is neighbor to neighbor, and that's exactly what is being set up with the Eugene Wildfire Coalition. They have a different level of connectedness with people that they know and are familiar with, and the coalition is broad-based across all of our areas at risk. There are people from the neighborhood, leaders in different associations that have banded together with Tom Peck, who is basically ramrodding the charge on this. And they've done phenomenal work. They've already acquired at least one grant that I'm aware of, and I know they're looking at some more. And they want to work in coordination with the fire department and within parks and open space. And again, they can do things that we can't. Plus, it's raising the level of awareness. The best way we are going to control a fire that starts in our areas of risk is first and foremost through preparedness and mitigation. You saw that before and after photo of Skinner's Butte, what it looked like with the heavy, dense brush where fire would just rip through that, especially on an upslope angle where fire superheats the fuels above it and it expands significantly faster. And then that second slide showed what it's like when it's been brushed out, and the fire will move very slowly, and you can actually stop it when it's burning in something like that. Well, that's through mitigation. And then the second piece is being able to quickly respond and get things under control. As I said, a budget committee last week, every year, we have fires that could easily evolve into a conflagration if we do not catch them when they're small and keep them in check. And so it's really those two things working together. Mitigation up front, followed by an adequately trained and equipped and rapidly responding suppression force. So I don't know if one of you have more to add. If, Tom, you have something to say to the wildfire preparedness coalition's work? I'm out of time. Thank you.
Were you calling on me? I would be happy to give a brief presentation.
If you could speak briefly, I would certainly appreciate it because I think it's important that the mayor and my colleagues, that we understand what it is you're doing and roughly how you're organized. So just, you know, a very short, quick explanation, I think, would be useful. Thank you.
Understood. Well, thank you very much. So the Eugene Wildfire Preparedness Coalition grew out of the Neighborhood Leaders Council, which is made up of 23 neighborhood associations. And we formed this coalition really in response to the Holiday Farm Fire and all of the fires in Oregon. We've been doing a lot of organizing. We have a great group. We've put on three wildfire forums featuring Chief Heppel and Deputy Chief Amy Linder and several other people, Katie Gibble from Ashland Fire. And really, our mission is to work with the community to educate them about the risk of wildfire and the things that they can do. I want to tell you that we got a grant from ODF to locate 100 South Hills property owners who wanted fuel reduction. We put up signs and postcards. We mailed postcards. We were just overwhelmed with response with people who were just frantic about what to do about the risk of wildfire. We ended up with 400 registered homeowners in the South Hills, and I don't have time to give you, describe their conversations. But people, the awareness of wildfire is great now, and there's a real importance to communicating with the neighborhood. I have two quick proposals, real quick, that Eugene consider hiring a fire adaptive community coordinator. There is one in Ashland, Oregon, and I'm taking their course. I'm taking a course with them. And the other is a Citizens Wildfire Risk Assessment Program. So I'm in a program that we are training, they're training citizens to go out to the community. This is a very low-cost program to do assessments and advise homeowners on what they can do to mitigate the risk of wildfires. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That was very helpful and very informative and very encouraging. So thank you very much for stepping up. Thank you, Randy, for inviting Tom to speak. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mike for comments and questions.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say, first of all, thank you to all of you, not just for a really clear and concise report, but for all of the hard work that you're all doing to keep us safe. Tom, I appreciate hearing your work as well. My question, I'm not sure who my question is to, whether it's to Mark or Chief or all of you, or I don't know. Is there a time in your memory when the potential for wildfire was higher than it is now?
No. It's interesting. I'll just use myself as an example, and that is, you know, I've been on the state overhead teams for a number of years now. And when I started on the program, we talked about those fires of those years, and then we had 2015, and it was like, wow, I can't believe that year. And then we had 2017. It was like, wow, I can't believe that year. And then we look at 2020, and it was even more devastating. So it's, you know, just things continue to escalate. We see it on a national level. This is not just the state of Oregon. It's across the United States. Many, many contributing factors to this with, you know, just urban growth into communities, folks just not being involved or aware. There's probably a global warming component that's associated with this, fuel loads, all of those different things. So from my perspective, it's pretty high.
And I certainly wouldn't want to put you in a position to contradict Counsel Groves in any way. But I take him at his word that the best sort of defense against that is twofold. It's the mitigation and the quick response in early stages to put things out fast. Would you say that's true, too?
I would. Certainly, the prevention mitigation piece is huge, just because of the size and scope of the problem. I would also reference that mitigation. Many times, we think of that as just simply a fuels reduction component. And from a preparedness and mitigation perspective, it's actually in four categories. One is local planning and regulation, so that's things like our risk mapping, having a community wildfire protection plan, and also while an urban face building code. The other one is structure and infrastructure projects. So encouraging fire-resistant construction along with defensible spaces. The third is the natural systems protection, so that's going to be our fuels reduction that we typically think of. And the fourth is that awareness and education through firewise programs, just general awareness education like Tom Peck and his group is doing, as well as risk mitigation on private property.
I would also assume, I heard you say knock it down fast and knock it down early is also a big part of that.
Fires are much easier to handle when they're smaller, for sure. So a quick response in the incipient phase, as we would call it, is preferred.
I hate to make a nuisance of myself, but I just bring that out and highlight it for our budget discussions when we're talking about cutting another engine or not from the budget, that my colleagues have a chance to hear that. Thanks, sir.
Okay, have Matt for a second round, and then it looks like Randy.
Thank you, Mayor. And in the, to help illustrate my point, Mark or whoever was driving the slides, if we could go to one of the earlier slides, I believe it was on page three or four, and it really nicely visually illustrated the risk to our community in the South Hills. Very clearly highlighted, page three, I believe. Yeah, thank you. Or it helps bring to mind what I'm about to move, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that is in the category of preparedness and mitigation, and it's not outside the realm of what this council has done in the past in drought years and with fire season, six, seven weeks on top of us earlier than anticipated. Mayor, I move to direct the city manager to prepare an ordinance and schedule a June 21st public hearing on an uncodified code amendment banning the use of all fireworks south of 18th Avenue or east of Aggett Street until 2023, and banning the sale of all fireworks south of 18th Avenue or east of Aggett in 2022. The proposed ordinance should declare this matter an emergency and include an immediate effective date.
Second.
Okay, discussion on this. Matt, do you need to speak to it more? And it looks like I've got both Randy and Alan wanting to speak to it.
Now, Mayor, I think I just did, and I also want to recognize that the sale would not go into effect until 2023 because vendors' contracts have already been signed for this year. And it would be my hope that both Eugene Springfield Fire, in cooperation with Eugene Police Department, would be able to utilize that existing space on the south of 18th, 30th and Hilliard as one of many vehicles to educate the public about where and when they can set off fireworks. And if should this motion advance, it would be a massive education effort, as we've done in the past, to educate the public about the dangers of setting off fireworks in the midst of fireworks season near the hills, hence the geographic location of this, of this motion, south of 18th, east of Aggett.
Okay, Randy, then Alan.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, my hand was up for a second round, but I'll just quickly say I support this. Counsel Zalinka's finger was quicker on the mute button than mine, so, or I would have seconded this. Thank you.
Okay, that's great. Alan?
Yeah, thanks for this, Counsel Keating. I understand the ban part of it and fully support that. In fact, we did it just several years ago, so it's not something new. That is the high-risk area, as the map clearly showed, and it's something that has precedents and we've done before. And I think it worked. The part that I'd like you to speak to, Counsel Keating, is the sale. And what difference does it make where they're sold, as long as you don't light them off, which is the point?
Thanks, Counselor. It's an access issue, and it sends the wrong message to sell something in a particular geographic area where you can't utilize the very thing you're selling. It's like selling, you know, beer at a ballgame, but you have to take the beer over to the beer garden to drink the beer. It's actually not like that at all. But my point is that if you're selling fireworks in a zone where fireworks are banned, it's counterintuitive to common sense, in my humble opinion. Therefore, for 2023, that particular vendor would need to look for a location in North Eugene or Bethel or Springfield, wherever they may want to look for it. But respecting the fact that contracts have already been signed, it seems to me the easiest path of least resistance is to put the for-sale ban in effect next year and utilize this year or use this year as an education effort while still embracing a ban south of 18th, east of Aggett.
Since Captain Metaphor isn't here, it's probably buying a beer at a ballgame and then going to your seat and not being able to drink it.
Right, right. Yeah, I'm working on my Captain Metaphor.
Yeah.
Ensign Metaphor. Thanks.
Yes, and um so do we have any idea? I know there's the one on twenty-nine or thirtieth and and Hilliard at the Albertson Station uh store. That parking lot usually has a lot. Do we have any idea of how many um locations this would be that would prohibit sales that have been traditional sale spots?
Counselor, if you're asking me, to my recollection, there's just the one, but I I defer to Chief Heppel, who might know know of more.
Go ahead, Mark. I know you know we have in permits.
Yeah, yeah, I can. Um, I don't have that off the top of my head. I'm looking at the large pile of reviewed fireworks applications though before me. Uh, it would be easy enough to geographically locate um what may be impacted uh in addition to if it's there to uh the one that was mentioned. I can easily do that. Just not right now.
Well, well, we're going to vote on it right now, so um that might be helpful later, but as a piece of information. Okay, thanks.
Okay, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. Ensign Metaphor, that's funny. That was good. That that was that was nice. Um. Uh, a couple of years ago, as Alan referenced, when we did this, um, and I thought it was a good idea then. And it it's certainly, I'm not against the idea now. It certainly considers. It's certainly um merits consideration. We had a pretty thorough discussion about enforcement because that's actually the tough part. Right? I mean, it's one thing to make the rule, but it's another thing to make sure that people are actually doing it and not doing it. In the state of our uh considerations of CSI and other things, I I would like to hear from the chief. I don't know if he's on this particular meeting, but I'd like to hear from Chief Skinner about enforcement and the costs or associated, you know, difficulty or cost um before we vote on that. I I'm happy to vote on this and 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 have discussion on it. Maybe, I don't know, maybe we need to postpone it it until we can hear some more information. I I don't know. I'm open to other people's thoughts. Thanks.
I would just say that you're just voting to put this to a public hearing, so you would still have time to get that information um before you actually would vote on the final ordinance. Okay, uh, Randy, you have want to speak to this or is that you still?
I'm still waiting for second round.
Okay, all right. So any other discussion? Are we ready for a vote on this?
Can you restate the motion, please?
I can. Move to direct the city manager to prepare an ordinance and schedule a June twenty-first public hearing on an uncodified code amendment banning the use of all fireworks south of Eighteenth Avenue or east of Aggett Street until twenty twenty-three and banning the sale of all fireworks of eight south of Eighteenth Avenue or east of Aggett Street in twenty twenty-two. The proposed the proposed ordinance should declare this matter an emergency and include an immediate effective date.
Okay, are we ready to vote? All in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six. And I believe that's unanimous because there are just six of you here, so that passes. And I want to thank you very much, uh, Matt, for bringing that uh that ordinance, that proposal forward. Uh, and then Randy, long awaited your second round.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, actually, to the answer to the question about have we ever seen conditions like this before? In the late eighties, there was actually watering restrictions for um lawns and we had a very bad time. That's that was where the No Fire in My Backyard campaign was initially uh developed, but I I'll tell you, this this year really worries me. I think we are worse off right now than we were before. But my my final thing is more uh just directing uh just an open-ended question to Battalion Chief Wayne Morris, who is the wildfire coordinator for the department and has uh quite a bit of operational experience. Um, someone who I've worked with over the years. I I I don't know, Wayne, do you have anything you want to add to this?
Uh, thank you, Counselor Groves. I can uh, if you would like, give a quick overview of the uh evacuation zones. That'll be coming out uh in the near future. Uh, let me see if I can share my screen here.
And and I I'm eager for you to do this, and I'm just alerting you that we are over time and council has another meeting at seven thirty. So a a brief presentation would be great. Uh, more follow-up maybe could could more detail later. So thank you.
Okay, real quick, then, uh, this is uh the evacuation zones that'll come and be coming out in the near future. Um, this came out of lessons learned from the Paradise Fire. You guys probably remember from California. Uh, what this does is allows for uh instant communication of an area for evacuation, not only for the incident commander that's coming in that has to do a quick attack and um also begin evacuations. But this allows uh the community members, law enforcement, nine-one-one, all to be on the same page about where we're going to evacuate and when. The maps that you see here, uh, GIS did a lot of hard work in putting these together. Uh, they are based off of geographic areas and topography uh to make for the easiest evacuation of those areas in the community. Um, we have a map for Eugene and Springfield as well, and then a large map for Eugene and Springfield together. It also has assembly points uh centrally located for people to respond to. You'll see this coming out mid-June. Uh, the maps are finished at this time. There'll also be an interactive website for community members to get to. Um, and you will see more on this in the future.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That is um, that is a a wonderful a contribution to public safety. I really very much appreciate your putting those maps and presenting them to us. It it actually makes me feel better right away. So thank you. And um with that, we are adjourned and I will see you all back here at seven thirty. Thank you again so much for your presentations.
Thank you.